You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to meet. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one. Heard around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Hello and welcome to the November 28th, 2016 Regular Fayetteville City Council Meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask the Reginald Johnston to come forward with my father's house ministry. Pastor, you've been up many times and we appreciate you coming and sharing the word with us.
Yes, my pleasure.
If everybody would please stand for the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, I come to you in prayer in the name of Jesus thanking you, Lord, for this meeting tonight. Thanking you, Lord, for this city that you have made and that you have blessed. Thank you for this opportunity for the citizens, the residents, to bring their matters before this city council and this mayor. I thank you, Father. And Father, I pray that you will bless everyone who will bring a matter, bless it to be brought in humility and with clarity. Bless this council, give them knowledge, give them wisdom, Lord, to weigh out every matter and to judge it fairly. Thank you for your blessing, Lord. You are welcome in this meeting, you are welcome in this city. And Father, I pray protection over our police department, that you bless them from the chief to every officer, even officers who may be out now on the road, wherever they are, Lord. Protection on them, on the mayor, the city council, and all the citizens of this community. We thank you for blessing this city to be great, in Jesus' name, amen.
Pastor Johnston, since you're up, why don't you tell us something about your ministry and something about yourself?
Okay, well, again, it's an honor to be here, Mr. Mayor, and to all the council members. I pastor my father's house Christian church and we're at 5303 Bragg Boulevard, right here in the great city of Fayetteville. And my heart, don't tell the church this, but my heart is, it just beats so deeply for our outreach ministry, which is called Capital. And through our Capital Ministry, we began that ministry in going into the prison and ministering to guys in prison. And from that, we have ten apartments where we help guys when they get out of prison to transition back into society.
And you've got some good statistics with that, too, share that.
Yes, all the guys who have been through our program, none of them have gone back to prison. And so we thank God for that, amen. And I also want to just add, I thank God for the council. Councilman McDougal, of course, Councilman Wright, and many others, Councilman Colvin have been a help in the ministry that we do. Our apartment's on Old Shaw Road and we've seen God with the help of the city clean up that place. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, sir, appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would like to welcome County Commissioner Charles Evans. It's good to see you, sir, thank you for joining us this evening. Would also like to wish council member Chalmers McDougal a happy birthday. He is not here probably for a good reason tonight. And I would guess that he would be excused on his birthday, but happy birthday, Chalmers. Council item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember ARP, seconded by Councilmember Wright. Is there discussion on the approval of the agenda? Seeing none, council, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous from those present. 6.0 is the consent agenda, Mr. Deviere.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move we approve with the exception of 6.012. Like to pull that item and table it? For discussion?
Right, okay, so we'll come back to 6.012. So that's the approval of the consent agenda with the exception of the last item, which is 6.012. Is there a second?
Second.
That's Mayor Pro Tim Colvin. Any discussion on the item?
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, that's gonna be pulled and go back to the baseball committee?
Uh, well, we're getting ready to discuss the item and that's probably what the recommendation is, yes, sir. Okay, seeing none, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous from members present. Mr. Deviere, 6.012.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to recommend that we take this contract, the baseball committee hasn't had a chance to thoroughly review the contract, so I'd move that we take the contract back for the agreement back to the baseball committee for a review before it comes back to council.
Seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Colvin. Mr. Chris, we have discussion.
Mr. Mayor, are we faced with a time constraint here versus when our next work session is? Or either going back directly to the baseball committee and then back?
I think the next phase of the agreement starts at the signing of the baseball contract. And since that has not been signed, is not scheduled, at least for two or three weeks, we've still got some time.
Okay, so we have time.
Okay, I see no other discussion, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous from council members present. Mr. Hewitt, I would ask you to please, anything that involves baseball, make sure that the baseball committee previews that before it comes to this council. Item 7.0 is the public hearings. Individuals wishing to speak during the public hearing should have signed up with the city clerk prior to seven o'clock this evening. Fifteen minutes will be given for each side, however, individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each. There will be no other engagement by the audience unless this chair recognizes them to answer a question from the council members. When you see the lights on the podium go from red to yellow, that's an indication you have thirty seconds left to speak. When you see the red light come on, your time is expired. And again, due to restrictions and policy, there will be no extension of that time. With that being said, item 7.01. Who is, oh, Mr. Sharp. Bring Mr. Sharp, this is in reference to the annual action plan for the disaster recovery activities.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This item, as you stated, is a public hearing for a substantial amendment to the city's 2016-2017 annual action plan. The purpose of that amendment is to help to assist and help cover some unmet needs as a result of damages for, through the Hurricane Matthew. The requirements of the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Grant requires that whenever we do a substantial, whenever we make changes to our program, whether it be a substantial funding amount or a change in activity, that we do a substantial amendment, which we follow our citizen participation plan, which requires a public hearing as well as a public comment period. We have advertised the substantial amendment and we put out for public comment information on this particular item. In essence, what this item is about is to reprogram CDPG and home funding for the disaster recovery housing repair program that we're proposing tonight. In essence, this particular program will offer grants in the amount of $5,000 to owner occupants and a zero interest loan up to $5,000 for investor owners to assist with housing repairs. Eligibility for the disaster recovery housing repair program will be based on applicant meeting the HUD's income guidelines. This will apply to the homeowner occupants as well as the tenants for the investor owner properties. We also would like to just note that currently the city's Community Development Department also offers other housing programs that our residents may be able to take advantage of if they have any housing, housing repair needs. The funds that are being proposed for reprogramming to establish this disaster recovery and housing repair program, it includes $100,000 of Community Development Block Grant funds that had been programmed for the Target Area Revitalization Program, $253,127 of home funds for the same program, then $200,000 of home funds for the Hope Luke Commons Apartments, then $107,000 of unprogrammed Community Development Block Grant funds, and then $240,000 of general funds that currently is proposed as the Affordable Housing Development Program. As I mentioned in your information, the $240,000 is from general fund and it is actually not subject to the substantial amendment that we're doing, however, is part of the overall $900,000 that's being made available. Our Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission reviewed this item and recommends approval, it was done at their November 9th meeting. The substantial amendment for this program, whatever council approves will be submitted to HUD for approval. Once we receive that approval from HUD, we will be able to utilize the home and Community Development Block Grant funds for this program.
But Mr. Sharp, clarify this again, so the general fund, $240,000 is not part of this, is that correct?
That's correct. We have in our advertisement, though, we made sure that we included that in the overall amount, but no, sir, you're correct.
Questions to Mr. Sharp before we start, Mayor Pro Tim Colvin.
Sharp, I appreciate that. I know that this is taking you to come up with some alternatives in light of a situation that the community, you know, has had an issue with. Explain to me in a little further detail because I know we had a representative from FEMA upstairs earlier. Councilmember Wright, I believe, asked a question about investor-owned property. I see you have a component here that would have zero interest for investor-owned property. What would be the criteria for that? Does it have to be rented to certain income levels or has to be in certain areas or what's the criteria for that?
The criteria would be that the tenant would have to meet the income guidelines, that's correct.
Mr. Deviere.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Sharp, for putting this program together and the speed that you put it together. And question, a timeframe for the program. So much like people that are applying for FEMA have a window of opportunity, are we gonna have a window for this program that people can apply for this program? Then there'll be a cutoff point that these dollars will, if not used, can be repurposed?
Right now, it's anticipated it would be used on a first-come, first-served basis and it would be available until the funds run out.
So there's not a time window for it? So it could be, if the fund doesn't run out for three years, we could have it three years down the road?
Well, for next year's, we would make a recommendation based on where we are when we recommend the budget for next year. So it's possible that this program will continue next year and we will budget for it based on what needs still exist.
But potentially, you could also roll any unused dollars back into a different fund as part of the plan?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Hearst.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sharp, for this and especially I echo Councilmember Deviere's sentiments that this was pretty quick and I appreciate that very much. So there is no window of opportunity, timeline, basically, when funds will be no longer available from this program?
It is not. The way that we envision this happening is residents, one of the criteria of the program is that residents will have applied for FEMA assistance so they'll know what that amount is and hopefully would have applied that, would apply for any insurance opportunities that they have. And then these funds will use to fill that gap of whatever other unmet needs that there may be. But so, no, sir, we haven't put a timeframe on it.
And secondly, how would the residents, is it through FEMA or would they be notified of this opportunity for them to seek these grants?
Well, we plan to do a marketing campaign to get the information out to the public. And for those areas that we are aware where there was substantial damage and where they may be households that may qualify, we plan to do some direct marketing to those residents.
Okay, 'cause that wasn't specified in here and so I think Ms. Lawrence of Habitat for Humanities' point of first-come, first-served was good, you know, depending on our messaging or how we get that word out, 'cause the funds, you know, there's not that many funds and there's probably certainly a big demand for them, so getting the message out, especially to those that where there is a need, would be very important. So, thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Mr. Wright.
Yes, Mrs. Sharp, thank you for the quick turnaround in this program and for the work that you've put in it. I have a couple of questions for you. When are the funds available?
Well, as I, we believe that we will need to receive HUD's approval before we're able to use a Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnership Funds. But we don't have any requirements on the 240, so we're hoping to be able to roll something out by the middle of December and start taking applications.
Okay, just for clarity, you mentioned the owner occupied, also renters, and did you mention the small business owner of a facility such as an apartment that has been flooded, are they too a part of this block grant?
Yes, sir, they would be and it would be based on $5,000 per unit that they have.
Okay, and how would they qualify?
They would be eligible with the criteria that they have to rent that unit once it's repaired to a person that meets the income guidelines that are set by HUD.
Okay, and so this is first-come, first-served?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you said by the middle of the month, then they could start applying now or at that time?
I would say at that time, just to, I mean, we've been giving information out when folks have called, but we do want to wait until it's actually open.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir, excellent questions and I know we're getting ready to open it up for public comment as well. But as Victor and I discussed, because it is first-come, first-served, as you are out in the neighborhood and you are meeting people, please refer them directly to Mr. Sharp's office so that we can begin. The best advertising is word of mouth and direct. And so as y'all are out and about, please make people aware and we can start a list so that once we get final clarity from HUD and we have all of our documents and papers set up and we're beginning our marketing, that we are able to hit the ground running and get this money on the street as quickly as possible.
Mr. Moan.
Question's already been answered by Mr. Sharp, thank you.
Mr. ARP.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions. One, how does this compare to what FEMA, the SBA, the homeowners, I'm good with that, but for the owner, the investor owners being able to get a loan, how does that compare to what FEMA and the SBA offers those folks? I mean, what kind of security do we have on a loan with them as compared to the SBA? I mean, we just had the FEMA rep at dinner tonight tell us that FEMA has the ability to move them over to the SBA and the SBA has very low interest, like 1% interest loans available for folks who need assistance.
Well, our goal was to do it very similar to what, well, operate it very similar to what our current program is and that is the property would be the security for the loan. And it would be at 0% interest. We thought that that would have some, they would have some interest in being able to get it at 0% interest. But the property would be used as security for that.
Okay, and then you made a statement that if they take a loan, then they have to, criteria that they have to lease or rent the property to someone that meets criteria for low-income housing, who's gonna enforce that?
Our office will. Once the property is repaired and they have a tenant, we will have to verify that tenant's information to make sure that they are meeting those requirements. If not, they will be in default.
And then how long does that requirement last?
I want to say it's a five-year period typically on the loans that we currently have with investor owners.
Okay, so a zero-interest loan and you have to lease or rent to low-income needed families and it's a five-year period of repayment in that regard?
That's correct. And I might need to check to see if it's the full term of that loan, but there is a period of affordability that has to be followed in order to be eligible for use of the home and CDPG funds.
And are we still trying to encourage these people to look at FEMA and SBA and to take advantage of those? I mean, $5,000 is really not a lot of money.
Exactly, and we are requiring that at the very least, they would have had to register with FEMA to go through that process to see what was available to them.
Okay, and then what's the cutoff date for this program?
As we said, the way that we're looking at it now will be until the funds run out.
I know, and I know the question was asked before, but I'm asking again, what's the cutoff date? Is expenditure of the funds?
Right, expenditure of the funds.
That's the intent.
Yes, sir.
Well, we just need, I think we need to be clear on that, so if people come in and they want to apply.
Yeah, or the end of the fiscal year, is that right?
It is possible that if there is still need there, we will come back with, this is part of our budget for the next year.
I just, I think I would move, Mr. Mayor and council, that we establish a cutoff date and then at that point, if there's a need, then we come back and address it at that time to continue the program.
So the end of the fiscal year would be a good time to establish if you wanted to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Colvin.
Mr. Sharp, a couple of things. One, I think it was important to note that with FEMA and with the SBA, they take in consideration deductibles on insurance and other things. I think the intent of this was kind of an emergency, at-needs situation while that process worked through. That process is not instantaneous from what I've seen, particularly on the business side. I'm not sure about the personal side. But my question to the city manager was, will there be a concentration on where the areas of our city were most impacted with your marketing? So in other words, do you hit those areas that were impacted the hardest with this program? Do you put your marketing efforts in there or you want to do some broad?
Well, we're gonna do, I would say, several different ways. We are gonna concentrate it in those areas that we are aware, those neighborhoods that we knew were hard-hit. We can do some direct marketing there. We'll do overall marketing throughout the city with our corporate communications department as well as the folks that have already called in, as Mr. Here has stated. We've already been taking names and we plan to send them applications whenever the program opens up. So we'll be sending them direct applications.
Hey, Mr. Sharp, I would recommend that you guys do what you've done in those designated flood areas previously and that is the door hangers. I think that's a great way where you go through and put that information on everybody's door. I mean, you market other ways, but that way you put it on their door and they have it.
And we've talked, we've discussed that. We, we currently have those for our other programs, so we certainly can, can add that as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Mayor, we just have one speaker for this item, Ms. Bridget Smith Osborne.
Hi, welcome. Hello, Mayor, City Council members. Um, I appreciate this opportunity. Many of the questions that I did have regarding the program was, um, answered. Um, but I would like to say that as I speak today, um, I not only ask you to hear with your ears, but with a compassionate heart, um, I come to you today to speak to you regarding Creeks Edge subdivision. Um, today, as I drove through this subdivision, I was amazed that the category three floodwater debris that was once scattered outside these townhomes, that residents previously called home was non-existent. Um, I do thank you for that. As the events have unfolded following Hurricane Matthew, I've battled many emotions and decisions. Do I rebuild or walk away from my so-called investments and stop contributing to the tax basis? You may be baffled why I'm calling this my so-called investments. Um, maybe it's due to the new HVAC systems that I recently had installed that was destroyed by the floodwaters or the tw- twenty-four hundred square feet of ceramic tiles that was broken up and destroyed. Um, the new steel tubs and surround kits that was recently installed and had to be destroyed. These are just some of the repairs and capital improvements, um, that I'm still paying on, not to mention HOV fees, um, existing debt, loans and credit card payments. Um, but when I think about Tenant A, a hardworking, single mother raising two well-behaved, well-mannered school-aged boys, or Tenant B, who has had the unfair advantage of losing her mom at a tender age and now is raising her child alone and trying to keep a roof over her head, or Tenant C, that's repeatedly causing, calling and texting me, asking me any good news, um, any progress. My voucher for the hotel is going to be up on January 5th. I don't know where I'm going to go. I say to myself that I must press on to the greater achievement of the future of this subdivision so that these residents can gain a sense of normalcy in their life and get back into their living quarters. But then I ask myself, how can I when I have a mountain of debt for my so-called investment and now I'm being told that I must take on another mountain of debt because there's no help available? Or is there help available? That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Hewitt, um, I know that, uh, or you had some staff at the, uh, task force meeting of the governor's, uh, task force in reference to Hurricane Matthew. Some of the recommendations were to not re-permit some of these areas that had flooded. Um, can you give us any indication where we may be with, uh, consideration from staff on, uh, not allowing the permitting process to take place?
Um, yes, sir. Um, I don't have the actual list in front of me, um, but I, um, did receive a preliminary list, uh, last week of certain structures in our community within the city that experienced more than fifty percent loss due to the flood, um, flooding resulting from Hurricane Matthew. And those properties which are in the floodway or in the floodplain would not be able to be rebuilt at that, um, level without being floodproofed, elevated or something fairly significant happening. Uh, Mr. Sharp reminded me that one of the, um, workshops that he attended, he and other staff members at the, um, Governor McCoury's Hurricane Matthew Disaster Recovery Committee last week was in regards to, um, um, buyout opportunities as well as we received some additional information about that as well, um, where, um, certain properties which have been, uh, frequently flooded or that potentially if rebuilt, even if eligible to be rebuilt, may pose a significant hazard to life and/or property. Um, your staff is fully exploring that with the, uh, our FEMA consultant, which we engaged with Council's blessing at your last regular meeting. Um, sadly, I don't have the complete totals yet for, um, for Creeks Edge. Um, I don't know if you've, if, um, uh, you've received correspondence related to the amount of flood, um, damage or to that property, but there are several, um, structures, um, in the community, um, that, um, because of the extensive nature of the flooding, the cost to rebuild and the actual price, uh, or value of the properties, um, before Hurricane Matthew can't be rebuilt as planned. Um, several along Wardless Avenue, which, uh, Wardless Street, which is, um, off Robeson Street area and, and, um, over near the newspaper. Um, I'm turning around to Scott. I don't know if you know of somebody else, uh, but we do have a list that we're compiling as that comes in. I would say that, um, to encourage people to, um, get the work done and get the work done appropriately and using contractors, the Council authorized us to waive all permitting fees for, um, flood, um, or Hurricane Matthew-related repairs. Um, and it behooves everybody, particularly those who have debt or will be incurring debt to rebuild or to repair, um, uh, to, uh, work with us as on, as quickly as possible so that we can get that numbers and allow them to know whether or not they can or should rebuild. That's, that was where the governor left it last week. It's a question not only of whether you can rebuild, but it should also be a question of should you rebuild in that area? And significant parts of Creeks Edge are in the floodway, not in just the floodplain, but in floodway. And so, um, if they, uh, they flood it this time and then being in the floodway, they will, those structures will flood again.
May we assume that Mr. Sharp's department, speaking to Mr. Schuford's department and everybody's communicating so these loans aren't being loaned out to folks who are not el- not eligible to rebuild or to permit?
Yes, sir. We, we, you can rest assured that will happen.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright?
Um, Mr. Hewitt, let me ask you this question to be clear. Um, for those that own properties, that are renting properties in the floodway, um, they won't be allowed to rebuild. So, uh, the question is, are they allowed to re- be allowed to rebuild or they will take the chance to rebuild on their own, uh, financial obligations?
One of the, um, uh, the determination about rebuilding really hinges on the amount of, uh, damage that was done as a result of Hurricane Matthew. If it exceeds fifty percent of the value, that becomes kind of the, um, uh, point at which, um, uh, we would not issue, um, permits for it to be rebuilt as it was before the hurricane. Um, it's, if you, anyone who's familiar with the coast, one of the reasons they build the beach houses up on stilts is because that is one of the areas in which you, you're able to floodproof is by elevating the structures. Um, um, mentioned the, um, HVAC systems as well. Uh, that's also one of the things that if you're familiar with the flooding that occurred over on Delaware, um, which is one of the areas, when you, when those people go back, I mean, I would almost be one hundred percent sure that all of those HVAC systems will be elevated. Um, again, it doesn't prevent the structure from flooding, but again, you want to try to make it as resistant as possible for huge mechanical issues. Um, on Delaware, if you actually look at the value of the homes as compared to the value of the, um, repairs, um, it's because the homes had such significant value, but the repairs are also probably quite costly as well, just looking at the amount of material that came out of them as well. Um, I'm not sure, again, uh, on Creeks Edge, but those properties which are in the floodway, if they were damaged, um, that people are in, in kind of really bad position sometimes in that they are so far in with debt that they owe, um, in making the renovations before the storm, that is kind of like you're in for, let's say, several thousand and it's likely you can't get your money out unless your repairman can get rent from them. Um, but anyone who is in the floodway, designated as a floodway, should be very mindful regardless of the, um, cost of the repairs, to be very thoughtful about whether they should renovate, refurbish those units and if so, if they are going to do it, if they're able, they're making sure that those repairs are done in such a way that they are trying to flood-resistant structures.
Thank you. Now, wh- when is the list of, the complete list of the floodway inabilities, uh, when, when would that be put out?
Um, well, it, it is a, it is a growing list. Um, um, be happy to share that with the, uh, with the, with the council, um, this week. Um, one of the things that, um, when Senator Tillis was here, um, Councilmember Arp and I met a fellow from, uh, one of the realty companies who'd indicated that he had, um, uh, been denied a, a, a permit. I mean, checking on that, I'm sorry, sir, I didn't have a chance to circle back with you. One of the issues that came up was, is that, um, the HVAC system was one of the issues which was out and, uh, the homeowner was saying that the cost, let's say, of the HVAC system was at some unusually low amount. And so not only are we just saying, taking it, you know, um, at what the homeowner or property owner says, but we're also using a reasonableness test. And so you can't replace an HVAC system, let's say, for two hundred and fifty dollars that's been flooded or completely damaged. And so, um, some of that, we're running through a damage estimator that, um, we have with FEMA that creates to kind of say, this is what the cost of some of those would be as well. But we'll be happy to get that list out, um, um, this week. Um, and then we move into the period, as the governor said, um, last week, how do we, um, help people who are unable to rebuild? Um, how do we help them move on? Because many of these properties had debt still attached to them and to tell the people they can't rebuild as it was before the flood, um, maybe we can make it flood-resistant, flood-resilient. Um, but we also have significant businesses as well, as you know, um, two of them as well, on, along Murkison Road as well, I can think of.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Mr. Devier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just along those lines, are we able to make that, can you make that list public and put it on the website so that we get it out to the, you know, so people can reference whether their area is in, is on that list? And then secondly, you mentioned about, uh, and this is for the manager, excuse me, you mentioned about fund buy, or, uh, buyouts, buybacks. At part, at the governor's meeting, it was, or talk about where those funds, are those federal funds, state funds? Are there opportunities for those out there? Is that what you're researching?
Yes, sir. Um, it's a variety as well as Mr. Sharp, um, early on after the, uh, hurricane, he came to council and shared some information about, um, um, a grant that we anticipate getting from HUD sometime later that would be dedicated based upon the amount of damage that we receive, that those funds, um, we're not quite sure of all the restrictions, which is one of the reasons that we have engaged that FEMA consultant as well to kind of help us figure out and identify where all those pots of money are. Because it wouldn't make sense for us to use general fund dollars on some if they're federal dollars, estate dollars and other places as well.
We appreciate you looking for those piles of money somewhere else beside our general fund. Mr. Sharp, just real quick, just a little bit off topic, but I just want to make sure I highlight, we highlight something. Part of the two hundred and forty thousand dollars were affordable housing, came from our Affordable Housing Development Program. Um, one of the concerns that we, we're talking about residents, we're going to talk about businesses soon, but one of the population that we're seeing and that was talked about, uh, last week at a continuing care meeting is this homeless population. We heard it upstairs, there's three hundred and, about three hundred people that are, aren't going to be in homes. Um, so I'm just wondering, I, I know that falls under your, i- in your department, but as we look at homelessness, there's only twenty-one beds across our community and then we look at this wave of what people are projecting to be about two hundred individuals or families across our community that are going to be homeless. Are we looking at, are we looking at potentially, a- and if we're taking dollars from that affordable housing fund, are we looking at other options on what we're going to do with this wave of people that potentially won't have homes to go back to, which will need other homes or even that short-term housing?
Well, we, we're hoping that some of the folks that are, are currently displaced will, uh, there will be housing. If they were housed prior to the flood, we're hoping that, uh, there is housing throughout the community that they can actually rent if they were, uh, tenants, if they were, uh, homeowners. Our, our goal is again to try to help them get, uh, back into their home. But there is that population, as you mentioned, the homeless, that, uh, we, we are in a, a dire situation right now because the Salvation Army, for instance, uh, they were actually flooded and impacted and they're not currently open. So all of the, the residents that they had in the Salvation Army had to be, uh, either housing hotels, some were taken to, uh, Rocky Mountain, different places, uh, shelters there. So that, that left us at a, at a gap where the folks that were homeless, um, we didn't ha- even have that overflow at the Salvation Army that we normally would have. And, um, we've met about white flag that, that will be coming up during the cold season. So we, we are working to figure that part out, but it still does leave a, a, a gap for, um, dealing with the homeless. And, and I'm hoping that there may be opportunity, uh, with, uh, the Community Development Block Grant Recovery Fund, if we are able to get that, there may be an opportunity for us to address some of the, uh, homeless, uh, needs considering we, we've had a loss in, in some of that housing.
And I just wanted to bring it up and highlight it because i- it's a wave that's getting ready to hit us that as council, we haven't had a conversation about, but sitting at the continuing of care meeting a couple of weeks ago, which is, uh, agencies across the community led by the county that focus on homelessness is talking about the population of about two hundred people that aren't going to have homes to go back to. So it's, it's another piece of this equation that we're going to have to look at. So as we're looking at other residents and business programs, hopefully this is something. I know Adolf was at that meeting. Um, hopefully this is something that we're beginning to look at and if there's opportunities or pots of money or, or, or solutions for some of this that's getting ready to hit our community in January when those vouchers for hotels run out. I just want to make sure we highlighted that other population.
Thank you, Mr. Devier. Mr. Chris?
Uh, my question about buyback has been answered to the extent possible without funding, but Mr. Sharp, I have a concern because I know that there are approximately three hundred plus people in hotels and temporary housing in the county right now and many of those vouchers will expire soon. What's being done and where are we in terms of alternate housing? Will they be able to get extensions from HUD or from FEMA? Will we have to help them? What's, uh, what's an alternative? A person in the hotel is told that his or her voucher will be done on the fifth of January. What will we do on the sixth of January?
Well, uh, uh, if they were currently, um, if they were in a housing situation prior to the flood, uh, as we have, uh, when the flood, uh, first hurricane originally happened, is to try to work with, um, landlords to find available, uh, housing, affordable housing for those that fall in that category, uh, to make sure that they are aware of what housing is, is available, uh, to them. And so those that were in housing, hopefully they'll have an opportunity to find, uh, decent and affordable housing to go back into. It may not be where they came from. So if, if, if a house that they were living in is, is not livable, then certainly they will need to find, um, other housing to live in and we certainly hope that there is still housing on the market for them to rent.
Well, I, I hear you, but my grave concern, Mr. Mayor, is persons who've lost everything, everything. And then all of a sudden, they're going to be out of a hotel on a given day. Now they can't go back into the house where they were living because it's in the floodway.
Well, I, I do know that, uh, HUD is extending that, um...
I certainly hope so.
...period of time. I, I know for a fact that they are.
I'm, I'm, I'm certainly hopeful of that.
I hate, I hate to give that date, but I think it was till the end of the year. But I'm not real sure.
I think that's, that's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mr.
Right, that's the date that I'm...
Well, let me, let me ask the city manager if I may, Mr. Mayor. Put your staff to work, explore an alternative and I'd like to hear something definitive about what we're going to do about citizens of this city who in, who are in hotels and or temporary housing at the moment. And when the vouchers run out, what's the plan? I'm hearing that HUD's going to extend it. For how long? I just, I got a grave concern because I can't sleep well in my comfortable bed knowing that there are people out here that have lost everything and have little hope. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Sharp's staff for, uh, for following the council's direction and, and moving, moving forward, getting some things. Hopefully this, this plan may be a help, uh, somewhat of a lifeline to those people that, uh, Councilmember Chris mentioned. With that being said, I would like to, uh, move that we approve the consideration of a substantial amendment to the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen Annual Action Plan, uh, for disaster recovery activities as a result of Hurricane Matthew as recommended by, uh, Community Development.
Motion by Mayor Protim, segmented by Mr. Arp. Council, uh, go to you for any questions. Council, go to you for any questions. Seeing none, council, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by members present. Mr. Hewitt, does that answer all needed? Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Sharp, appreciate it. Item 8.01 is the appointment of a council member to serve a one-year term on Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. I'll go to Councilmember Wright.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would nominate City Councilwoman Kathy Jensen to serve a one-year term on the Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors.
Seconded, Mr. Mayor.
Seconded by Councilmember Arp. Any other nominees? Just kidding. All right, all, all those in favor? Madam Clerk, that is unanimous.
Except for Bobby. Bobby's chairman, Mr. James.
8.02 is the rezoning of property from MR5 mixed residential to an limited commercial. Is that, oh, Mr. Harmon's already up, snuck up on me, Mr. Harmon, for a property located on Enterprise Avenue. Mr. Harmon, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. As you recall, this is actually a case that was tabled by the council back on September 26th. Public hearing was held that night and closed, and the, in the motion that was made that night, it was asked that staff get with the residents of the neighborhood and the applicant and see if they could come to any kind of understanding between the two groups. I'll just very quickly run through some of the slides just to remind you of the case we have here. Property is the last really undeveloped property on Enterprise Avenue. Everything to the east just past this is housing. Everything to the west that's already existing is more of an industrial nature. Again, it is undeveloped. Our land use plan calls for medium-density residential. This is one of the properties owned by the applicant that is beside of the one we're looking at tonight. This is the actual property in question, and then this is the property to the left, and then the housing that starts just on the right-hand side. The staff did hold a little community meeting with Mr. DeGraff and five of the neighbors in that area. Unfortunately, they really weren't able to come to any kind of conclusions at that meeting. No, it really ended in the same place we were when we started. The only, the only thing that came out of it, I think that was helpful, was the possibility of maybe these additional three conditions could be added to the list of 27 that the owners already agreed to. If he's, again, the property owner does have to agree to these, but these seem to be some of the things that the neighbors didn't want the most out there because of the car storage that was already there. And then just a quick look at the 27 items that were already conditioned out by the owner, and just a reminder that the zoning commission and staff both did recommend denial, and this is coming to you on an appeal of that denial from the zoning commission. The reason for that is the existing residential development surrounds this property on three sides. City's land use plan calls for medium-density residential, and that light industrial uses, we didn't feel provided an adequate buffer to the existing residential. I will also note, there's a little handout that the owner has provided you tonight that should be in front of you. The clerk has handed those out, just with a little bit of additional information on the property, mainly about when some of the industrial stuff started there in that neighborhood. Any questions of staff? Again, the public hearing for this has already been closed.
I see no questions. Mr. Harmon. Mr. Devier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If there's no questions or any other actions, I'd move to deny the rezoning to MR5 mixed residential zoning district to light industrial zoning district as presented by staff based on the following: the amendment is not consistent with the applicable plans because the city's land use plan calls for medium-density residential. Number two, the uses on three sides of the property are, are not compatible with the proposed zoning. Number three, the proposed zoning is not reasonable and in the public's interest because the proposed zoning does not fit within the character of the neighborhood.
Seconded by Mayor Protim. Council, is there discussion? The motion is to deny, so a green would be to deny, a red would be to allow, approve. All right, seeing none, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's eight to one, with Councilmember Hurst voting in opposition of the motion. 8.03 is Disaster Recovery of Small Business Assistance Loan Program. Mr. Devier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before Mr. Pelnick begins, I just wanted to reference the email that I sent out to the council, and appreciate the council's tolerance for allowing this to be presented tonight. I know it kind of circumvented the process of going to a work session first. The intent of tonight really was to allow Mr. Pelnick to present the.
Get some consent for staff to work on it, bring it back to a work session to us, much like Mr. Sharp did with the residential. The need to kind of expedite the process is based on the situation that we're in, the same way that the residents are in with the business. So again, the intent was to allow it to get presented to the body tonight with a framework that we can give some direction to staff to, to put some further guidance around the program, and then bring it back to us for further review and approval.
So you're okay with us just sending it to work session at this point?
I believe that's the only way it's going to have conversation, Mr. Mayor.
That's the correct way, yes, sir.
So I'd like to, I'd like to frame it up.
Okay.
And again, Mr. Mayor, the reason I sent it or requested, and I appreciate the patience of the council, was because of the need for this type of program, much like we did with the residential program.
Right. Okay, council, is there a motion to move this to December council work session?
So move.
Seconded by Mr. Moan. Motion made by Councilmember Wright. Further discussion, seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous, councilmembers present. Thank you, Mr. Pelnick, good presentation. Item 8.04 is request from developers of the Spring Hill Suites on final action. Mr. Pelnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, good evening. Let's have to readjust, that presentation's over. Mr. Mayor, members of council, back on May 24th of this year, you first heard a request from the developers of the potential proposed Spring Hill Suites Hotel for economic incentives involving property tax grant backs. That request was then noticed as a public hearing, which you held on June 27th, 2016. At that time, it was discussed and it was tabled. If we go back to that time, just to reiterate what this was, Naanish and Manish Mehta, the developers of the proposed Spring Hill Suites Hotel, which is to be a 121-room select service, Spring Hill Suites Marriott Hotel product, would be investing $11 million on this project. It would be immediately adjacent to the existing Embassy Suites Hotel on Lake Valley Drive, which they have also developed and which they own and operate. We believe that the taxable value of this property after it's developed would be approximately $7 million. It would employ quite a number of folks in the process of doing it. If they were granted the 50% property tax grant back for the five years that was first contemplated and noticed by the public hearing in June, we estimate that the total property taxes paid to the city over that first five-year period would approximate $174,825 years. If the 50% was granted for each of those five years, the total that the city would receive in property taxes would be $87,412, and an equal amount of $87,412 would then be rebated back to the developers in property taxes. So basically, this is coming to you for final action at this point in time to consider what was first noticed as a public hearing, which is specifically 50% property tax grant back on the city-assessed property taxes for the Spring Hill Suites Hotel proposed for the Lake Valley Drive site immediately adjacent to the Embassy Suites. The developers, Mr.s Mehta, who represent Five Points Hospitality, are here and certainly available to answer any questions that you may have. Also, staff is available as well.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Arp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It pleases the council, I would move that we take final action tonight to grant the property tax grant incentives to Spring Hill Suites and the amount of 50% of the actual total increases in real and personal property taxes paid to the city as a result of completion of the hotel for each of the five years commencing January 1st, 2016, for the 121 hotel facility as contemplated. Consistent with the terms of our economic development incentive agreement.
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protim. Mr. Crisp, is that a question?
Yes, sir.
I'll recognize you, sir.
Why 2016 hotel isn't built? Why 2016?
Well, they get the incentive now, but the hotel will be completed in two years, so...
Then why not, why would the grant back not begin once the hotel is completed? You, your motion was for 2016 inclusive for the next five years.
My motion was consistent with what the staff recommended. If you'd like to offer a friendly amendment, I'd be open.
There is no hotel, so why are we giving a grant back on that which does not exist in the year 2016? That's my point.
From what I understood, it was, it was to grant back once the taxes were paid or received, so i- is that the way that the other previous grant back program worked, Mr. Manager? Once the taxes were paid, then it, the portion of what was paid was granted back, decreed upon portion? So then that, I mean, it's only relevant once they pay it?
There is no taxes for 2016 because there's no property. So why would the motion be inclusive of 2016? I would hear 2017 for five years, but there is no property for 2016.
So do I, do I understand, would you like to amend it that we begin effective January 2017?
That's your motion, sir.
Well, I mean, I'll accept a friendly amendment.
I will not amend it, no.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Pelnick.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I think when you look at the council action memo, on our options when we looked at number two, the way we, the way we wrote it was, beginning with the tax year wherein the valuation is established on January 1st, 2018, the intent was in the recommended action that that same date follow through, and it was a typo that it was 2016. It was intended to be January 1 of 2018.
So then I will, that's, that's fine, just get it right next time. I will amend my motion to 2018.
All right. Mayor Protim, is that?
Yes.
Actually, it would have been to our benefit because if they are paying taxes, they're not getting benefit, but that's fine.
Okay, so next time you'll get a proofreader. Council, any further questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's six to three. Those voting in favor, Councilmember Wright, Arp, Robertson, Colvin, Jensen, and Hurst. Those voting against, councilmembers Crisp, Devier, and Moan. All right, council, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.